I guess it would be me. I'm wondering if I could squeeze in a moment about the sublease option at the LCOC. Because as I was meeting their signature before I came in.
Didn't hear what you said.
Oh, so it's just me and I'm hoping you can adjust the agenda to put in talking about that sublease that we're going to talk about in the last meeting. But I asked you to remove one.
When we're ready to talk about it, we'll bring it forward.
No, I mean this is something different.
Okay, go right ahead.
We want to sublease some space and according to our lease with you guys, we require your signature on our sublease with the requirement that the sublease must state that you guys, MSAD, Yankin, have the right to revoke the lease in seven days.
That is correct.
So we have an opportunity to sublease the old superintendent's space and our subleasee would like to start doing the moving in a couple of weeks. So I was hoping you could discuss and sign the sublease.
Do you have the information on the?
Yeah, got everything. It's Tammy, it's, yeah, and I'd sent Mr. Johnson the stuff before.
Okay, do we have a copy of this here?
That's the sublease we're looking to get to this on. She, it's, love at first light, Tammy is looking to take the old superintendent's office from October to the holidays to try running her shop out of it and then just storing her stuff in our building till May. And it doesn't interfere with our use of the space for like summer rec and our other programs. So it's just an opportunity for the LCOC to continue to support local entrepreneurship and utilize our space successfully and perhaps get us a little income.
Okay, so they're looking to run their shop that they run down there with all the trinkets and shirts and ice cream and something like that in the old superintendent's office down in the building?
Right, just until the holiday and then she just wants to leave her stuff in our building till May and then move it back to her place.
Did they get that floor fixed, Nancy? That was all, yeah.
Yeah, it was fixed before summer, summer rec used the room.
And how will the public access the building?
The other doors down the far end, we've repaired those, you know, the ones where did you see where we had our garden, the summer rec, those door at that end of the building? Because that old superintendent's office has a bathroom. So if, if the other end of the building isn't open, those doors would stay shut and her public would just come in and out those doors right there.
Okay, so the inside doors, those are lockable?
Well, we can, we can secure them while she has her shop open. She's not, you know, she won't have any more hours than she does now. It's very limited hours. She's just trying, you know, we're just trying to see.
But I'm thinking they have public access down there.
Right, if it's a Saturday and the thrift stores open, we have the whole building open anyhow. And if the, you know, Eastern Agency on Aging is in there with the Tai Chi, the building's open anyhow and when the NERC volunteers are there. But if it were to be times that we had nothing happening on our side, her public doesn't have to go into the building, would just be on that end at the superintendent's office because there's a door in her space and then there's those double doors there.
Now, what about, I did think you guys for nonprofit, you're, I mean, how much are you tagging?
Seventy-five dollars a month, it's in the sublease. Seventy-five dollars for the month that she runs the business and then twenty-five months, dollars a month to keep her stuff there till May.
Now, for you guys though, I thought you're nonprofit and you're not allowed to make any money. Is that why?
No, nonprofits, nonprofits have to function. We have to, we have to, you know, have a budget and everything costs money. And we have a mission of promoting local entrepreneurship besides supporting families. And she approached us and it was a win-win because it really does work. That room, you know, there had been other talk a while back about somebody, but we used that space for summer rec and like, you know, we don't want to be around renter in there. So this just was an opportunity that seemed feasible for this year and don't know if it will go any further than this.
When did she mention this to you?
September, right before your last meeting.
Because this is the kind of thing I would really like to see on an agenda, not show you on an agenda.
Right, we had talked, before your last meeting and Mr. Johnson and I had talked and it was going to be in his superintendent report, but then I had, we had one other thing to work out around insurance and I wanted to be sure we had everything in place. So I asked to not talk about it, but now you guys won't meet again.
Yeah.
Until she would like already be working on this. So that's why I've come before you tonight.
And what about, why couldn't the people in lighting, because I talked to that lady in the F C, why couldn't she have something down? I thought she was going to let.
Because she wanted to be year-round and we used that space for summer rec and that would, one of the pieces that we identify in our work is that, you know, any subleasing we do, we don't want to interfere with the primary work that we do, which is the after school and the summer rec. And that, that would have complicated that, which is why this was just the perfect thing at the moment, we think. It's an opportunity that we didn't want to deny for, but our lease requires, we, the leasee may sublet a portion of the premises subject to the lease source written upon arrival, like you guys. The lease source reserve the right to revoke its consent to a sublease with seven days notice. Any sublease shall include that provision, if you note, it's on there. And any sublease shall not diminish the leasee's responsibility. So, you know, we shall have all the same responsibility.
Now, what is she going to do? Does she realize about your heat situation down there? What is she going to do about heat?
Well, it's above fifty in that room all the time, you know what I mean? It's like, it's a workable thing and space, I don't know, you know, that's, and her, her open hours are very, you know, you know what she's open now, it's very limited, so you have no bigger plan than that.
And while the LCOC portion is not open, but that store will be open, she'll have access to that door to come into the building?
Yes, yes, just these are ready.
And the secondary doors are secure, be able to secure?
We would be able to secure them, you know, whether it would be, you know, a bicycle lock on the handles for the time that she's in the building with signage and, because she has bathrooms on that side. But there really won't be that much, at least, I don't think there'll be a lot of time that she's open that we're not in the building, you know what I mean? But I don't think there'll be, but we did talk about that, that, you know, because that's why it wasn't ideal space for her because it does have a bathroom. It's, you know, independent of that.
And my other concern is liability because it is a public store.
Yep, and that's, that was the piece that I asked him to remove it last time because I wanted to talk to her to be sure that she contacted her insurance about moving her liability to our address for temporarily, so that.
Okay, will her insurance cover her liability there at that point?
Well, that is the one thing that before I signed that lease, I needed to see from her, but before I can sign that, I need you guys to approve that it would happen. So we won't sign unless, it states on there that she has to have all necessary insurances, liability, and if she doesn't, then we won't sign the lease. But she does and I talked to her, Tammy's talking to her insurance company, you know.
I can't recommend the board signing to approve a lease that we don't know if they're going to have liability insurance.
Well, she has liability insurance and if you cannot move with her, we won't sign it, is what I'm telling you. You know, she won't, if her liability won't move with her, then the LCOC won't sign the lease for her. Because we, on our lease, it states right in there, our sublease does not lessen our responsibility and we already have the responsibility that we have the liability for. And I'm really just trying to facilitate a local business with a plan for the winter.
I move that we sign the sublease with the condition that Tammy has insurance.
I'll check it there, pending the liability.
That's the only concern that I have is that, you know, if she can't get her liability insurance moved to that premises there, then.
Then she won't.
Can I ask that there is a motion to amend it? Because we're not signing the sublease, we're giving consent.
We're giving consent.
Right, right, exactly.
So I would second the motion to consent to the sublease.
Okay, so a motion on the floor, you have a second, to consent to the sublease providing that evidence, we could provide with insurance to sign.
Can I read the motion as I can see if that's what we want? Motion, consent to the sublease pending verification of liability insurance.
Of insurance.
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
If you want to sign that, I'll take it back and I appreciate it. And then when it's all signed, I can leave the copy if you want.
Vice Chair, you can sign that because I.
And you'll have to be the first one to assist. I think she's going to try to be there for our bizarre.
I'm just concerned about liability insurance and something like that and having the public, having the public access to the building when the LCOC program is not in use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so normally we would have to have it on the agenda, but.
Yes, and I, and I really appreciate, I do appreciate that, I didn't, you know.
Any other public participation? Okay, consider the approval of the September 26, 2019 School Committee Meeting Minutes as written, all with corrections as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Mike, I had a few questions to go there.
Go right ahead.
One thing I wanted to bring up again, Nancy had said that it was okay for the after school program to have a key. I'm wondering where we're at with this, especially now that somebody else will be able to have a key, then a teacher that's been there for thirty-three years should be able to have a key on the block day, on weather day.
You have a question about the minutes?
Is that?
That's what we're doing right now.
It's right on the minutes, thank you.
We can get into that on School Committee stuff, okay? What I want to have done right now is to get a few of the minutes as written or with corrections, so.
On the, in C, and I guess right now would be a time to ask Mr. Johnson about this Chonky School and I don't.
Okay, again, can we just approve the minutes and then mark down what you want to ask regarding these minutes that you had questions from the last meeting?
What do I do if I want to change in one of those? When do I, if I want to change in one of these, do I talk about that in the School Committee?
Was there, was there a change need to be made?
That's what I wanted to talk about.
Was there an error in the minutes?
Well, there's a clarification in the minute.
Okay, what's the clarification?
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, well, for one thing, Lubeck would pay tuition and the tuition should be at a public school base, not at a private school like W A. It shouldn't be at that price.
And your legal basis for that is what?
The what, Shunida?
I said what we're paying for tuition is what the state allows us to pay for tuition and what we're required to pay for tuition.
W A's tuition is a little different than public schools, isn't it, Mr. Johnson?
It is, and the difference is the six percent idea, but they are not a public school. The Chonky School doesn't receive state subsidy. So they bill, they bill for tuition. They are approved for tuition by the state, but the state doesn't fund them directly.
So I mean, that is mentioned in the minutes on the rate that we're paying.
Okay, I'll bring my things up under the School Committee then.
Okay. I add, is that, yes? On number four, key for the substitute teacher rate of pay? I'm not sure I want the minutes to have to be rewritten, but I would like to observe that we had a fairly extensive discussion of scarcity of substitute teachers, the prevailing rate of pay. I mean, it was not just, oh, let's pay a hundred bucks. And this doesn't reflect that discussion, but I just wanted to make that comment on the record.
I can, I can add.
Well, we can actually go back to the minutes that were kept on the camera.
Oh, okay.
And we can see we had, we did have quite a.
Yeah, we had a quiet discussion, it wasn't, yeah.
Because, I mean, substitutes are hard to find, you know, and we come up with that, you know, scenario that someone else says, okay, what do you pay? Nope, I'm going somewhere else because they pay more, so.
Well, what with W A.
Okay, so I have a motion on accepting these minutes as written or with corrections.
So move.
Second, I guess. All in favor? All opposed? I'm going to say four to one. Okay, Principal's report.
Tina sends her regrets.
We'll talk about that in a minute here while she's not here.
Yeah, she, she, she's at the school, but I'm happy to read her report.
She's down at school right now with several other people peeling water up. Laying their boots and pushing squeegee. There we go.
Sounds so relentless.
Tree, transforming the rural education experience, second training with Brittany, with Brittany Ray. His plan, Brittany Ray will be president at the November 21 board meeting with approximately a one-hour presentation beginning at six. So that particular program, he was implemented in Charlotte and Charlotte lost the program. They're very remorseful in Charlotte, but we're happy that we, we had that. Kurt Jack, professional evaluation and professional growth model. He's a consultant that we use around the district to help with the evaluation model. Several teachers met today to work out any sticky spots for their action steps and growth plan. The way that Kurt does it, he worked with several districts around the state and particularly in Washington County. So if he's going to be in town for one, he'll book a second day and kind of get around the horn. So he was actually here and also at Alexander today. So, yeah, Kurt's well-traveled. October 15th, Harvest of Ideas, that's this coming Tuesday, day-long workshop for all teachers in the county. The director of the Washington County Consortium reported to the Superintendent's Group with over five hundred people, five hundred area teachers from all the districts have signed up for that. So we're looking forward to a wonderful event on Tuesday. October 23rd, Everyday Math Professional Development, Grading and Assessing Webinar. That's an ongoing professional development that we have through that curriculum offering, Everyday Math. October 30th, Halloween Dance Sponsored by the Lubeck Education Association.
Question?
Yes.
Lubeck Education Association? Is something wrong?
Lubeck is a less teaching unit, right?
That's very much.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that they weren't there either.
Ian, are you guys going to have the PTA or PTC or whatever that is, are you going to have that again, parent teacher?
I don't want, I mean, we tried it, we got very little participation, since some of us were there before. You know, we're willing to try, we get a whole lot of response. It's very exhausting, very time, two or three, four people you want it. We decided to give it a break, just give people time, because, you know, they were busy. We can try, we used to do this years, if we can get, you know, we can certainly try.
There a time on that dance? School, right?
Five thirty to seven. They have, we've been doing this for three or four years now, having a dance for the kids as an option. It might have been just like a Lubeck Teacher's Group, I mean, just official.
Thank you. Number six, Halloween Activities at School on Halloween from twelve to one thirty. Are the kids coming costume? Right, okay, I think that's fine. November 1st, P E P G, Action Steps and Growth Plans are due to Tina. That's part of the evaluation process. She sets up that deadline just to make sure that the teachers submit to her what they need to submit. And finally, November 5th, Downey's Institute for Fourth Graders. Are they going to be violent, I take it? Thanks. That's a good question. School Committee.
I, hold on. I have a report on the Chonky School.
Okay.
Because it had come up so much, I did some research on my own. Turns out the Chonky School is a pretty impressive place. It's got alumni in Brown, Carnegie Mellon, Columbia Cornell, Dartmouth, Georgetown Harbor, Johns Hopkins, MIT, Maine Maritime Academy, NYU, Pitts, U. Mike, Pomont College, Princeton, Smith, St. Lawrence, Stanford, UC Berkeley. It's accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and is approved by the State of Maine Department of Education and is an associate member of the Association of Boarding Schools. Basically, it's a particularly rigorous academic course of study designed to include, I'm just reading off the, the material, intellectual engagement, community involvement, articulate expression, sense of place, they're on a four-hundred acre campus that they use for their academic program in sense of self, I have no idea what that is. They have students from thirty-eight high schools in Fortune States as well as international students. Thirty-four percent come from public schools, sixty-five percent come from independent schools, and only thirteen percent of their students come from Maine. So I think it's a pretty impressive program that the students have.
Do they go freshman to senior in this school?
Actually, no, it's a one-semester course, studied.
For June, I did some research, yeah.
Took the one-semester course?
Yeah.
So they would, the student would be returning to wherever they ordinarily go to high school at the end of this next semester.
So they just have it like from September to December?
Apparently.
Yeah. I would like to say, which I'm very happy for the student, but I would like to say to Shunida and to Melissa Lee, last meeting, and I called Mr. Johnson, both two, last meeting, you two said, yes, we approved this, yes, we talked about it. And I read John Rule's Party Tides and it had been tabled, which I thought it had been. So, you know, I feel like I've been blatantly lying to, so this student could go without any further ado of us having to have this information as I had wanted to have it. And I'm not very pleased with, with these actions. I do want to find out about this key for our after-school program. I know they're not, these kids are not going to melt, just like Melissa always tells me, but I would like to see them in bad weather if they have to use a key to get down there. Would you approve it, Nancy, that they could take these kids down? I wanted to also ask about, and this is our only time, on this hundred dollars a day for the substitutes, what is their job description and who qualifies for this? I called Mr. Johnson's office the other day and like for homeschooling, of course, they're certified. And what about GED, Mr. Johnson? Are they eligible?
A substitute? They are, a substitute basically has an age requirement. They have, they have to be, the rule of thumb is twenty.
Okay, so that's the only requirement.
You can't have a substitute be in close proximity to the age of the kid that they're working with. And that's not the only requirement. The most important requirement is that they have a valid fingerprint. They have to pass C H R C, Criminal History Record Check. So even though, even though a substitute is not an employee, they do have to have a valid C H R C and the age, the minimum age isn't necessarily written down, but that kind of the unwritten rule of thumb that's in practice and it's common practice with schools, that there's got to be a level of maturity there.
And do they have a job description?
No.
And I had gone over last week to Mr. Johnson's office and I would want to touch, I guess, Tina, about this, but I wanted to be able to review all these miscellaneous accounts, Mr. Johnson, which there, there's a lot of them, like the Robert Maher Scholarship, Field of Dreams, all the different classes, the yearbooks. I'd like to be able to review all of these and I don't, do you know where they keep those, Hannah? Any of that? I mean, do they keep it at the school? They must. Like who created these and what they're for? No, that's okay. I mean, I wanted to.
I assume Norine would know, if it's a school account, if it's a school basic account, it would be Norine.
Right, those are, those are building level accounts.
Okay, all of them are?
Those ones are.
Okay. What about other ones?
Norine and Tina would be able to give you some more immediate information right handy and it's regrettable that Tina's not here tonight, but they can give you that, they can give you information about those right readily, I would say.
And we did have somebody, I think you advertised this past month, I know that we had somebody apply for the athletic director and I was wondering where we were at with that. You said that Tina and Bill are standing in until we, you know, until we interview. Have we interviewed anybody yet?
Not to my knowledge. I have not been involved with an interview for athletic director. I know we're running the ad and I was, truthfully, I was on a weird, we had an applicant until you just told me. So I would expect, I would expect interviews to take place in the near future.
If we have them.
If we do. I just, I just, I just don't know, but I'm not taking longer than a word.
Well, somebody asked me for a reference, that's why I do know. And I'd like to find out, I went over and I looked, you know, at the budget and everything on the, they had somebody come down and work on the computers and also with the fuel list, Mr. Johnson. I know I keep going back to that during fuel, but I'd like to know who authorized that.
Had somebody come in and look, had somebody come in and work on the computer?
Yeah.
In the case, you've had two different people work on your computers this year. You had your former employee who helped us out in a pinch because the young man from Eastport that this board has agreed to use on a pay-to-play basis was unavailable. So we had an immediate need at South School, get printers up and running so our, so our teachers can function. And your former employee was kind enough to help us out. Since then, our needs, there was still a need, so I did indeed encourage the young man from Eastport to make time in his schedule to get from Lubeck, and he did. And I do believe that I've signed his cons slip for the time that he came down here. There is, there is a record of that, he was here on whatever day for however long and that his, his payment will show up on the wall.
Now, if the person in Eastport, I mean, they called and, you know, they call and he's just too busy. I myself, I'm wondering why they don't, why aren't we advertising for an I T department?
And the answer is, the position was eliminated from the budget and currently we have a small stipend for in-house support that Kathy, that Kathy Morse provides us with. So the simple answer to the question is, I can't advertise for a position that doesn't exist. That position was eliminated from your budget a couple of years ago.
If we have a person, you know, which I know we do, then, I mean, does she do this type of work on the computer? Like the printers and does she do that type of?
She does as much as she can.
Yeah.
And if something is beyond her ability, then the idea was to reach out to this young man in Eastport and, and, and Eastport is willing to share and I don't need to repeat myself. But we did, we did have to use your former employee because we had a, we had an acute need right at the start of school. There was a lot of demand right at the start of school.
Now, that, that position was eliminated two years ago.
Yeah, I remember that, but.
And was agreeing to go and, and, and work with Nathaniel?
Yes.
From Eastport on a per diem basis if we use him and so on like that. And actually, up until this point, it's worked out fine. And most of, most of the issues with the computers are generally have been flushed out and mostly is with the Apple system. And Kathy had a pretty good handle on what was going on with that. I think this last time, we had a problem with a printer and so on like that and there was something going on with the printer that either she was unavailable or she didn't know anything about it, so. I mean, if we contracted with an I T company, you know, on a per diem basis, there's only one or two around here anyways and they're not in town. So it'd be about the same as, you know, hiring someone for an hour, an hourly rate or having a phone call from Eastport.
Well, I don't think when, like they said, they had a desperate need at the beginning of the year and they had set it down there, I mean, Nathaniel's just not an accessible person, so.
He generally, he generally is, you know. If we have something that, that really goes wrong and a couple of times last year, I know for a fact that, you know, he'd be kind of talking to Kathy on the phone, what's going on, you know, what are you looking at, something like that, and have that situation corrected out of, you know, taking care of that way till if you can't visit, you come over to the building, so.
And I talked to Mr. Johnson about trying to form a subcommittee for the. Um, and I talked to Mr. Johnson about trying to form a subcommittee for the budget, um, for us to have a closer look every month, and I know we have a budget committee from our town, but to review the budget more closely every month, uh, especially in light of what happened last year with the fuel situation.
So, so you're looking to have a subcommittee for an ongoing subcommittee, starting when?
Starting in November.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I don't think it's, uh, gonna hurt a thing if we form one. Uh, there's a lot of things every month, uh, and it gives us all an oppor- opportunity to have a closer look at, at the school budget, I mean, it's the most expensive, probably the most expensive budget in Lubeck.
Okay, and we can put that on the November seventh agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, maybe you can expound a little bit more what you're looking to do as far as on the subcommittee, and you're to decide that way there.
And I'd just like to ask, uh, what, if adults wanted to have basketball, how would we, uh, approach that, Mr. Johnson? Uh, they've had it in the past where the adults came in and had basketball at the gym?
I believe that's a regular thing on Sunday nights in town, and it would be governed by, uh, your, your facilities used policy, and we, we've taken this up in the past, uh, an or- an organization would have to have a, uh, insurance binder, and that's, that was what framed our conversation in the past. Uh, but the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong from, from any of the board members, the intent was to allow, uh, events like that that have happened historically to continue. Uh, my understanding is not necessarily under the umbrella of some other organization, it's just a group of community people who, who come in and, and play basketball on Sunday.
And that's what it is. So they just have it, I mean, if they wanted another, a different night, like maybe if they wanted to do it, they just have to sit down and fill that paperwork out?
I, I, I believe there's like a one pager, uh, that Tina has, and if there isn't, if there's something that we need to have in place, we can put it in place, but I'm going from memory, our, our conversation, um, focused around like organized groups using the facility, needing an insurance binder. Uh, I don't think we've fleshed it out any further than that, simply because, you know, this, it's, it's, it's a multi-purpose facility, and this is something that's gone on historically, and if, you know, the men of the community, um, understand that playing basketball has some inherent risks, if you're choosing to play basketball and twist your ankle or something, that's, goes on with the activity. Uh, I, in my opinion, I've played a lot of basketball in the Chi, I've done the same type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't believe there's any intent there, uh, from, from those guys to super school, if they slit the a- if they turn their ankle voluntarily playing basketball. So your col- your, your policy and the procedures aren't fleshed out to include that type of activity, they give more towards an organized group, uh, u- using the facility for some thing. Uh, but, um, I, the intent of the board, to my understanding, was not to, not to prevent that happening, not to limit that use, this is something that's going on, and I don't believe there was a problem with it.
Okay.
Is somebody else's memory different than mine?
No, that's pretty much it.
And just one more question, when, uh, will we get a review of two thousand eighteen's audit?
I would say soon, and I would say that because, um, I signed your letter of representation in my name.
Mm-hmm.
And what, and what that says is, for the, for the FY nineteen audit, that yes, in fact, you know, this was done in accordance with the regular accounting principles, it's just a formality, but I signed today, and usually the audit follows closely thereafter. So I fully, I fully expect to see it, this is, that this is the October, this is October. I can't guarantee that I would have it at the November meeting, but I expect to have it before Christmas.
Okay.
The, the, the state law says before twelve thirty-one, uh, and, uh, your auditors have that well in hand, so I expect them to meet that deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, chief of management's report.
Couple items in my report, uh, here this evening. Um, I was asked to kinda offer an update on the, on the status of the website. I got some information, and I regret that Tina isn't here tonight, so she was gonna provide a little bit more of a, of an update. The web- the website is up and functioning, it's maintained by Kathy. Uh, things can be, things can certainly be added to it, uh, and if there is something that we feel should be on there, I would, I would say recommend we either shoot Tina an email or, or Kathy directly, we talked about lunch menus and activity-
There's a lot of things that are not on there.
Would you give the web address, please?
I don't, I don't have that right with me, John, I'm sorry.
I couldn't find it, I went looking for it, couldn't find it.
You went looking for it and couldn't find it?
That's correct.
Okay, let me make a note of that, 'cause that could be a problem, doesn't do you much good to have a website, nobody can find it.
I didn't know that nobody can, but I couldn't.
Let me, let me make a note of that.
Yeah, I haven't been able to find it.
Yeah.
The only way I can find this is through Facebook.
Yeah, I guess so.
Gonna say, let's put it on Facebook, because it seems that everyone goes on Facebook anyway, so.
Well, myself, I haven't been able, I, she gave me my, I did get on, and she gave me my password, a temporary one, and it was, uh, an unsafe user, so of course I didn't go into the website, um.
But the, the, this board in the past has said things need to be posted on there, like sporting calendars-
Well, there's, there's, there's all kinds of areas for sports calendars, but there's nothing there, okay? And people will go on Facebook, one of the games, okay, and somewhere down the road, or somewhere in the past three weeks or four weeks or whatever, someone put up a schedule, and they have to go hunting around Facebook. The whole idea of having a website is have, have something in one location where everyone can get to it, okay? There are school lunch menus, outing clubs, information, whether it be forms and so on like that, calendars for sporting events, I believe on one of the subcommittees we had probably two months ago, or a month ago, uh, we asked that there be a tab put in for, is it soccer? That is missing?
Soccer.
Okay, I mean, soccer's big around here.
The outing prom-
Okay, but there's no tab to soccer, and there's still no schedules. So, you know, people go to Facebook. Now, it was also mentioned on Facebook again about having an early release tomorrow and having mundane Tuesday off. Well, that should be on the landing page of the website. It's not. When you have the landing page there, you put your most pertinent information on the landing page. I haven't seen the update on the landing page in probably three weeks. So, why do we have a website? No one looks at it, everyone's looking for the website, we have a reporter here in the room who can't find the website address. I've had to tell a couple people on Facebook, here's the website address, because no one had any idea that we had a new one. So, I mean, Kathy did a lot of work on this thing, we pay a stipend for this thing, but nothing was used. It's concerning.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
There is, in fact, a dedicated website, although it hasn't been updated in over a decade. If that address, which is a very intuitive address, could be recaptured, somebody has, somebody's maintaining it. Websites don't stay up forever without somebody paying the, the website. Somebody is doing that.
The old one from, like, two thousand nine?
The old one, that's right. It hasn't been updated in-
I believe there was an issue with actually getting that domain.
The domain registration fee has to be paid, or else it's kidnapped.
Yes, but I believe, I believe someone else has control over that domain.
They haven't done anything with it.
I know.
Who is it, somebody else?
Who knows? We don't know, we can't figure that out, okay? So, I believe the, the website address for the new website is fairly simple, and you can very easily figure it out, but you just have to know what it is, so. I will make sure that goes on the Facebook site of the Consolidated School, so everyone knows what the website address is, and I'll put it in big bold words.
Thank you.
Because a couple of years ago, the school board wanted to have a new website done, we finally got one done after two thousand nine was the last one we had, okay? Let's use it. Let's go to one central place. If you want to still go to Facebook, they can go to Facebook, but they might be able to get more pertinent information on the website if it's updated every week or every other day or whatever it might be, we're closely doing that.
Speaking of that real quick, Mr. Johnson, where does the website invoices, what, what account does all that come out of, uh, for our, our website? What account is that on?
The tech, it would be on, it would be the technology lines on the regular instruction, where things of that nature are paid. And if nobody can find the website, uh, it ma- it makes me wonder if we either have been billed or had paid the hosting fee for the aforementioned website. Uh, so, we're gonna have a couple of things working together here, but I'll, I'll look into that.
You make one note, please shut your phones off, please.
I understand.
I'm here to run this, thank you. Yes?
I just wonder if having a full-time teacher maintaining the website is, is workable. I mean, I think to really keep it up to date, you need someone to put a couple hours a week at least into it.
That's why she's paid a stipend to do it.
Well, she's paid a stipend to take care of the computers, I guess, to maintain the website, too.
Okay, that's part of the stipend, is to maintain the website. I mean, I'm not a web guru, but most of the stuff that's on there is plug and play, it's not HTML anymore, so it's very easy to slip something in, probably just as easy to slip something in on Facebook, okay? But if we could actually link both of them together, if people want us, they're on Facebook, we could actually link our website to Facebook. So if people are more comfortable on Facebook, they don't wanna go on the website, vice versa. So, but I think, you know, the school boards, the past school boards, you know, two years ago, I think put a lot of effort into getting this website up and done, this new one, and Kathy did a great job on it, let's use it now. Let's, let's put the information where, where it needs to be, so, that's my true sense, I'm sorry for that.
Okay. A couple other items, I was asked about the possibility of, for the future, potentially making use of a van for student transportation. Uh, obviously, a van would be more, uh, fuel, economical in terms of fuel consumption. Uh, unfortunately, there is a hard and fast prohibition on schools using vans to transport students, and that has to do with the safety features of a bus, obviously, a, a big yellow school bus, flashing lights and a swing-out has all those things on it, but that is, uh, that is a hard and fast rule, uh, prohibiting, uh, schools from using vans. Um, if you, if you see one circulating around in the state, if you're zipping down nine ninety-five, there are a few school districts that use vans, uh, for adults to get around to professional development activities. Give you a couple of examples, I know there are some vans in use in Oruska County, but teachers carpool to professional development to save money in terms of mileage and, and so on, and wear and tear on their vehicle in some of the more remote places of the state. So it wouldn't be extremely unusual if you're in Holton or going down nine ninety-five toward Augusta to see a van or something that has somebody's school name on it, uh, but they shouldn't be transporting kids, because if there was ever an accident in a van with kids on it, it'd be incredible.
I actually looked all up, head up, Mr. Johnson, and it's definitely against the law, I mean.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be an accredited-type school bus, much like the Minotaurs that I think Eastport has one or two, and, you know, like a twenty-four passenger school bus. So, some states, New Hampshire, they can use vans, Massachusetts can use vans, uh, private schools can use vans, but it has to be for adults, okay, so, yeah.
So a couple other items in my report, at our last meeting, uh, we tabled the session of the, uh, of the, uh, community, adult community lunch program. We are obviously over the fifty percent threshold, and I said I'd bring some more information, I've got some information here for the board. Uh, a lot of these do answer the questions that we had. Uh, just to, just to summarize, one thing I will say that isn't really brought out in that document, if Lubeck were to implement that program, those would be considered subsidizable means, so my office could bill for state reimbursement, but we do have to follow the same nutritional guidelines, uh, and that's, that's tied to, that's tied to the reimbursement. So the food costs and labor costs would, would still be there, uh, but I would encourage the board to, uh, take this home and to digest that, and we have to have a hearing at some point in the future anyway with the community, and the hearing will inform the board's decision. The board's gonna have to vote one way or another whether or not they want to implement the program. But I provided that from the question and answer page that is associated with that, and Leslie Burke in my office would be able to answer a few more questions if they come up. She handles the nutritional reimbursements and, and so on, but her-
Who's that, Mr. Johnson?
Her name's Leslie Burke.
Yes, yes.
In my office. So there's, there's some information, a couple other items, uh, just to follow up. The bullying presentation that we hosted in September, I had made reference in the spring that it was my intent to pay for that with some of the unexpended grant revenues. Uh, procedure, uh, would require that I inform you of that, I'm informing you of that tonight, that we've got the bill, it's a thousand dollars, I signed, paid the bill, it is my intent to use the unexpended grant funds, uh, pay for that specifically in the area of prevention, and I think that's a logical place to take that from. Do we have any, do we have any questions about where the money's coming from?
And, uh, can I ask, Ken, how, really quick, how did that go in?
When I saw, well, my little kids, then I did step up for issues, but there was other people there, I thought it was, while they were one, I thought much well, kids could have gone through these times, and it's not-
Finally, tonight, I regret to inform the board that, uh, the reason Tina is not here is because she's assisting in the mop up and cleanup at the school right now. I got a call, my cellphone went off as I was about to enter the Dainesville school community meeting, that there was water bubbling up through the floor drains at the school, and, uh, fortunately, folks at Dainesville concluded their business. I had a schedule, and I was able to stop at the school before I came to this meeting. There is water on the floor in the cafeteria, in the hallways around the cafeteria, and there was enough water for it to flow down the steps, leading to the IA building, uh, the IA, the IA shop down over the stairs. The good news is, it seems to be confined in that area, but there's no water to the kitchen. Uh, Cecil and Mr. Moran were, were both there, uh, Cecil knows that school probably better than anybody, and he turned the valve off to isolate the elementary section of the building, uh, but there were men, there were, like I said, Tina and Sheldon and Mr. Moran, Cecil, there were members of the LCOC there, all assisting in the cleanup, everybody had their hands full, and, and that's unfortunate, but, um, I think, Mike, you talked to Cecil right before the meeting-
Apparently, it looks like there's a drainage problem in that area of the building. Um, there is no affordable water in the cafeteria, or in that area of the building yet, so, um, you can't have breakfast there tomorrow, you can't have lunch there tomorrow. Um, the problem is, my suggestion is basically it's a half-day tomorrow, going into a long weekend, is to cancel the school day tomorrow, okay, for that reason, and, uh, we believe that this is, uh, backup in the surge system, so we don't want anyone flushing flushes, okay, to cause any kind of further damage or further infiltration of water, so.
No, we don't want kids exposed to it.
So my suggestion is, and this is something the board would have to vote on, is basically cancel date the date of school tomorrow for that reason, so, and give everyone a longer weekend.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Five seconds.
Okay, any further discussion?
How will the parents all be notified?
That's right, we need to do it right away.
Yeah, Tina, Tina can do school messaging, and it goes out, uh, but she obviously was, uh, interested in what the board's decision was gonna be, so if I could prevail upon Anna, after we have this vocal step out on the deck there and turn your cellphone back on a call, I'll let her know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Extra long weekend.
Thank you, Anna.
That's all I have in my report. Okay, any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay, there is no old, new business as far as I know. Uh, new business, to consider the first reading of the following required policies. And I have a question, who's requiring us to have policies on this stuff?
Okay, the, uh, the required policies, uh, they have state law and main school management, uh, behind them. The chemical hazardous one is more, uh, if you have a, the intent behind it is behind, like, high school science lab, but it is also possible for elementary schools around the state to have certain chemicals, and obviously, you know, elementary kids aren't gonna be formed hydrochloric acids. I've got three, I've got three copies there.
I've got three, I've got three copies there, but that, that's the intent, just to make sure that that's, that's a safety feature, that particular, of that policy.
So it, so we don't have anything on this right now?
We do not.
And this is like, uh, anything from simple cleaning fluid to, you know, something they might use in a high school lab?
Yeah, it has been, it has long been required policy to have MSDS sheets available, even for what custodians use, or the material safety data sheet. And it would say, you know, window cleaner is this, and it has this.
Correct.
Procedure, that's always been a requirement.
Where's that kept, Mr. Johnson?
Where's it kept?
Where's that, yeah, where's that folder kept?
I don't know exactly, but Sheldon should know where it is.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's not in his office, it should be in, in Norrleene's office or the principal's office, but we have to have, we have to have those around.
To, to go back to my question, why are we required to have these policies? And who's actually mandating we have them?
The, the short answer is, is main school management, and if you call them, they would say that it's also based in statute, but immediately, it's main school management.
Okay, so in the last page of the chemical hazards, it says the person appointed to the chemical hygiene officer
Yep.
must be an employee of the Lubeck Elementary School, preferably a science teacher or another staff member who is knowledgeable about chemicals being used in the schools, laboratories, or students' schools. So if the person to this qualification is tapped, are they paid for this?
No.
Well, is all of that, all of the second part under laboratory science chemicals?
So let me.
So we might not be held for that.
So I can, I, I think I can provide a little more information. When you, when you closed your high schools, I, I wasn't an employee, so this is speculative to some extent, but I think it's reasonable. Once upon a time, you had a high school lab with chemicals in it. I would fall over as amazed if those chemicals weren't rounded up and disposed of appropriately at the time. There is a, there is an organization that comes around to schools and does free inspections. Ed Ans of the gentleman that does that, Safety Works is the name of his organization, if you're, you're curious and wanna, wanna check that out online. And I, and, and he's been on site periodically over the years. But there have been programs in the past to round up, you know, chemicals that may be left over from old high school science labs and, and, and dispose, and then take them off the premises. If you've got a, if you've got anything like that left out there, it would be minimal. And somebody is named as the chemical hygiene officer.
You know, just ask Mr. Johnson, would, like Sheldon, he's our maintenance per, person, is he, he must be certified in some of this.
Probably not in that, and only because that's micro down the qualifications. He would not have been a science teacher here in the past and would not know, like, what chemicals we can't store on the same shelf.
Yeah, but they have a class for, for that, uh, to get certification. Or like in your nurses' office, do you have the I-plot, or does the school have the I-plots and?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be very surprised if they had anything that custodian would go to, but.
Right.
Though not the mixed bleach ammonia.
Well, they do have classes, yeah.
Well, they're two different things here.
Well, yeah.
Laboratory of Science Chemicals in there, so he has that.
Right.
So they're different.
They are, you're right.
Um, I, I think in this paper, there should be something listed where, you know, these material data safety sheets are kept.
Yep.
And there isn't. And I think, you know, further on this here, it should be, you know, who's trained to know what material data safety sheets say, you know, as far as what the hazards are and stuff like that. I mean, and it goes back to what Wanda says, you know, who's qualified to do that?
Well, it's like, you know, well, let's say with the hospital, for instance, uh, you know, we have a, a, we have a, a book, a fold on every chemical, or alcohol, like anything, has a sheet about it, and what are you gonna do if something happens, if somebody, so.
I mean, tonight, we're just looking for a first reading, and what I would suggest is, if we come back to the next meeting, we'll go to suggestions. Like Mike's thrown out a couple of suggestions that make sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
If I add it, add it to the pages, we'll work on it.
So is this something that's mandated by the state?
It is.
But to that point, I have a question. If we don't have laboratory science chemicals in the building, if we only have in the elementary school, do we, are we mandated never but less to have that section in the policy when we don't have it at school?
I think, I think we're required to have it in the policy. But in, in reality, if we don't have a high school lab, we don't have a high school lab. But I, but I don't, but I don't think that we can edit that much of the policy out and still be in compliance, but it's a good, it's a good question.
Uh, just, where would I apply the law on these? MSMA?
Yep, and the, the, in, in some cases, the law is cited.
I'll, I'll, I'll check those out and just answer my. Because if we don't have to have it, take it out.
The, the, the contact person at MSMA for all policies is Charlotte Bates.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Well, you have to find out too what chemical is under this.
And many times when we order chemicals, they'll come with a, with an MSDS sheet in the bag.
They're supposed to, by law.
Right. So they, so if Sheldon orders, like toilet cleaner, and he orders a case of it, they'll have an MSDS sheet in the bag, and it's just, you can put it, you can put it on. So just looking for a first reading tonight?
Motion on the EVAA chemical hazards.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that particular policy? All in favor? Okay.
Mike?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mike, I have to ask any question about high school buses tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you can.
But do we, no, do we still wanna run high school buses tomorrow, you ask me?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna be out of session. It would be the same way, it would be the same if we, if Machias and WE were in session. The answer is yes, get our kids to high school.
Okay, try to try. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
So we do have a legal reference to this here, and this is the Family Care Leave Act, and, um.
Is there any more?
I believe, isn't this superseded by a federal law?
Yeah, this, this one, this one, and I'm not an expert on this one, but it is, it is an offshoot of FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act. In layman's terms, under FMLA, you can't deny somebody leave, but FMLA is without pay. And beyond that, um, I'm not especially familiar with, with that particular policy. That one is, uh, that one is the one I haven't had to implement in the past, so I'm not as up on that one. Uh, but, uh, it is, it is a, it is a requirement, and you would duck tail with FMLA, sure.
And FMLA, you have to exhaust all your vacations to at least first.
Right.
And then you are covered, not lose your position for twelve weeks for care of direct family member.
Right, I believe that in the past couple of years, we did have, with FMLA, we, we had. So, uh, my question to you and the board is, okay, so we've gotta comply with this act anyways, why do we need a policy on it? Because, you know, the policy is there and it's state law. Why does the town of Lubeck, why does the, the, the school of Lubeck have to have their own policy on it?
The, the guidance, the guidance that I have received in the past, and this, this may seem like an oversimplification, um, local boards like yourselves have the ability to tweak them a little bit, to make them fit and work for you locally. The other thing that I would say is, if an employee wanted a copy of the policy because they were affected by it, they have the right to that, and it would be a burden on the employee if they had to go search through the legal references that they may or may not be able to find. Some, a lot of the details of employment law talk about availability of policies. If you have a person that needs, that needs this policy, it falls to administration, Tina and myself, to help guide them to be in compliance. And I'm not a lawyer by trade, so the policies are a ready source that we can use to help our employees. It's, it's, it's connected to accessibility, and I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer than that. But the law in practice, unless you're a lawyer by trade, can be kind of an abstract, faraway thing.
Is this one like the state, is it verbatim like the state? If we looked at generic, is this what it's tell us?
The boilerplates that come to us from main school management are all the same.
So this comes right from main school management?
It does, and if you went to their website and, and said, here it is now, what Helen does is she inserts Lubeck, where it says insert name, and the boilerplate all the time will just leave that open. So if it says Lubeck, that's because Helen stuck it in. But the rest is.
So, so why do, you know, so this is the stuff, I can go to the, you know, the main law site and so on like that, or I can reference this, um, legal reference here, and it'll pull up this exact verbatim, correct? What'd you say?
At main school management, it should.
Okay, so.
It may not be, it may not be.
Why are we coming up, why are we coming up meetings with stuff we're gonna have to adhere to anyways?
Yeah. Beyond, beyond the answer that I gave, I'd have to ask Charlotte Bates for that myself. I'd have to contact her and say, my board has a question.
I mean, if there's certain things we have to tweak and so on like that, in some senses, we're, okay, that could open us up a liability.
Yep.
If we change what everyone else is doing, okay? I mean, on something like, you know, a chemical hazard thing, okay, I wanna know where the MSDS sheet, yeah, MSDS sheets are located.
Right.
I mean, that's something that could be put in there, that's something that's not gonna affect us legally other than we know what room in the building those sheets are. But something like this, okay, if we start mucking around with it.
You're right.
Like I said, we're not a lawyer.
Right.
Why mess with something that we've already, we can access without having our own policy?
I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I discourage the practice, but I have told boards, and boards have done this in the past, they've tweaked them a little bit. And I've had to send them down to our legal services and say, if we make this change, are we in compliance? And many, many, many times, our attorneys to school, because all the towns share the same attorney, they'll say, let's tweak it a little bit, 'cause they understand what schools are getting at. And they'll, they say that because they understand how schools function, how they operate, what they need to, what they need to essentially do business. Uh, so if, if a board suggests to me extensive changes, or if I've got a concern, I'm gonna pass it on down the line to that board's legal service, and I'll get the ruling on it. But you're not in a straitjacket when it comes to those policies. It's not absolute, you can tweak them, but if it's a significant change, you run the risk.
The question I have is that we have to comply with it anyways, okay?
Yes, you would.
Why do we need our own policy on it? We just go to the legal reference, as we've done in the past. Two years ago, this was done, without having a policy on this.
Yep.
And it was done, and there were no problems, okay? I mean, it just gums up the meetings, it, you know, it drives us through whatever to ask questions about certain things and stuff, and then we get into the point where it could be, you know, people wanna change things. Well, we're not lawyers, and it's gonna cost us money to change things, or it's gonna cost us money maybe down the road to fight a legal case.
Ultimately, if this board doesn't, ultimately, if this board doesn't want to adopt a policy, I can't make you adopt the policy. Conceivably, if we have somebody that attempts to access it, and says, where's our policy? And we don't have it on the books, that's a technical violation.
Is it a state policy?
It is.
Does, does the teachers have it in their contract?
Teacher contract has days, uh, so many personal days, so many professional days, and there's a descriptive clause there that says what they can use sick time for.
Yeah.
We, we just said it's a violation if we don't have a policy here. Why is it a violation? We're adhering to the law. We don't have to have our own policy, we just have to abide by the law. Up until this date, this never came upon our desk.
Right.
And it's been done several times over prior to the past ten years. So all of a sudden, we're in violation?
At, at this point, I can have Charlotte Bates answer your question. Why do you need a policy when there's existing law on the books? I will ask her, and I'll bring the answer.
Like I said, we adhere to the law that we have to adhere to. Why do we have to have our own policy?
So are we gonna change and come back with the answer?
We can.
Okay.
Well, it's just the first reading anyway.
Is it?
It's just the first reading anyway.
Yeah, I'd be, I'm going to approve the first reading, and then we can come back and.
And who was Charlotte Bates, Mr. Johnson?
Charlene, Charlene Bates, uh, she is an attorney herself, she does have a law degree. She works for main school management, and she is the contact person for these policies. That's who, that's who sends them to Helen in my office, she is the person that I call if there's a question. The, if the main school management website has a list there of required policies. They also have a list, I believe, of suggested policies.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of the GBO Family Care Leave Act.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, C. I vote no.
Let me ask a question on the chemical one also?
No, I voted yes on that one.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
C, I H B G, homeschooling. So Lubeck has never had a policy on homeschooling?
Don't have that one. The policy that you have talks about homeschooling participating, homeschoolers participating in programming that we offer, whether it's academic or extracurricular. Students that are homeschooled do indeed have the right to access our programming in a limited fashion and our extracurricular activities. That policy you have. This policy governs, uh, the parent's responsibilities to the homeschooling process, and a parent has significant responsibilities. They have to have an educational plan for their child. If they don't want the public school system to educate their child, that's fine, that's their right. I respect that, and I've got students that are homeschooled all over the district. Uh, but they have to have an educational plan, they have to have a third-party assess and review for adequate progress. When it's done correctly, I actually have third-party evaluators send me a letter saying, Johnny or Suzie has made adequate yearly progress, and is recommended to go to the next grade level.
Okay, and again, this is stuff that we can go to the legal reference. And for these actual, there's several of them here.
Right.
And it's boilerplate. This is actually the same thing that's in that legal reference here, I can go and go on the statement website.
It, it won't be verbatim as the law, but the law is technical, but the policy is verbatim on the main school management one. The only difference, like I said, is Helen probably stuck it in Lubeck, where it says insert name.
So they're basically out of that, that whole look from.
And how many children in the, in this district do we have, uh, homeschooled right now?
In Lubeck? I, I, I have the number for the district as a whole, all of ALS seventy-seven. I sent out twenty-five or twenty-six letters informing parents that there is a homeschool portal for the main Department of Education, where all of the forms are available, there's contact information. And parents that have done it, I get an email from the department that says this student has successfully registered as a homeschool student, and that's the extent of my, that's the extent of my involvement. Now, the law provides for my office to assist a parent. If they don't have internet access, they can get paper forms. They can come to my office, we can help them file it online. They can come to my office, and I can answer questions. So myself and, and my office are there as a support for homeschool parents. Uh, but the requirements of having an educational plan, having a third-party evaluator and so on, uh, does rest with the parent, and that's what that particular policy gets at. And your current policy just talks about homeschoolers accessing educational programming and extracurricular programming, so this policy you don't have.
So with, uh, uh, with that was, I mean, I've heard there's like eight to ten, um, students that are homeschooling, um, in Lubeck. I'm sorry to ask this real quick, have we lost any students, Mr. Johnson?
Have you lost any students?
Since school started?
Yes, homeschooling. I don't know if you're losing them, you, you can't count them for subsidy, but you do it. There was, there was a family that applied for homeschool earlier this year, that would've been after school started. There was, there was a family that applied for homeschool earlier this year, it would've been after school started.
And is it something that's sad, nineteen to ten, the number of children, don't you have to monitor those if there's a hostess?
We, we can do, we, we know the number in my office, I haven't got it with me, I haven't got it with me tonight, but yes. We do, we do monitor that, and now's the time, because by the end of the month, we have to upload the October one enrollment for subsidy. So if you have a student that, that started the school year with you and then transferred to homeschool, then the exit code says transfer to homeschool. And the only ones, the only ones we wouldn't know about would be undocumented ones whose, whose parents hadn't made those arrangements with the statement.
So again, I can go to the legal reference and find this on the state website. Okay, if I have a motion on the first reading of IHBG homeschooling? Can we have a second on that?
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five to two. Four to three to two, sorry. It's been a long day.
Can I ask real quick too, how often do you have to review, uh, policies, Mr. Johnson? How many, like, is there a certain number of years until they update?
No, the policy can get updated when the law changes. That, that's the most common methodology. If the legislature changes a law, Charlotte Bates notifies us, here's the revised policy, the revised boilerplate policy that is in compliance, and that, that's how it gets done.
Okay, the next one is JHC, uh, JICH, I don't really like that. Drug and alcohol use abuse dependency, J I C H dash R. Drug and alcohol use abuse and dependency procedures. So is this a new policy? Is this something that just came out?
There are, there are similar policies that you have on, but not necessarily this one specifically. And what, what catches my eye is being different would be at top page two, where it talks about, um, prevention and information. That is a little different flavor from some of the punitive policies. You do have policy on prohibitive conduct. And there are penalties, it's in the athletic codes, in your regular policy. But this one is, this one is a slightly different flavor.
I have a couple of questions about language. Um, in the last paragraph in the first page, begins to harder school committee policy. Talks about administering drugs, and says only the school nurse or the principal. Would it be appropriate to have the school principal or slash designated?
Yes, and, and that has come up in the past. Best example is field trips. If you have a child who needs medication on a regu, at a regular interval.
Yeah, you don't have the nurse or the principal.
Right.
Or the principal doesn't feel qualified to administer that.
So we, so if you're curious as to how we've handled that in the past, we've asked the parent to go on a field trip, and not once around the district have I had a parent say no.
Well, that, I'm saying, can we put that in policy?
Yeah.
The other question.
Do we have a one-time?
I, I don't think so.
The other language I had an issue with is under prevention and education, third line down, where it says, program should teach students that the use of drugs and alcohol is wrong, which strikes me as sort of heading into some kind of more halved thing. I would rather it said something to the effect that it's harmful and destructive to students and their peers.
Then, 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 those are the, those are the types of edits that, that, that make sense. And then, and that, and that's why, you know, just the first reading, yes, pause.
Well, wouldn't you say the illegal use of drugs and alcohol? Because students may use medications all the time for, for conditions that they need in.
Uh, the, yeah, that, that's good, but it also covers over powder drugs and stuff, which may not be, the legal one is not permitted.
I think the prevention and education part of it is, we're not talking about using children's Tylenol.
Yeah.
So I think it's implied what we're trying to tell them not to do.
What, what's another policy that we already have in place that's like this, Mr. Johnson? You said there's another one out, something like that?
Yeah, you, you, you do have a student code of conduct, and there are, there are examples of prohibitive behaviors that are listed in there. Uh, and also to, also to Mike's point, there, there is pertinent, uh, state law on the books that are going to this, because, uh, drugs and violence are two of the automatics that rise to expulsion level, and that's in the law. Uh, but, uh, there are several policies, and they should be cross-referenced, uh, on the back there. Uh, whether it's, uh, weapons violence, that's J I CIA. Student code of conduct, I don't know the code of that one right off the top of my head, but you do have a student code of conduct, uh, in, on the books. And the, and a lot of them go together, but the ones that go together are usually cross-referenced on the back, unless it's a brand spanking leave policy. But, um, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know that, um, that, uh, code, you can see the code here, J I C H is this one. A lot of them are grouped together, J I CIA, I have to look at that for a different reason, so I know that one. J I C K is boilerplate. So you see the code of conduct kind of go under the J's? And that's, that's literally how it's all about.
Okay, do I have a motion on this first reading?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Consider discussion of implementing an after-school food program to establish, and establish a date for public hearing.
This is a carryover from the last board meeting, uh, regarding that law, I provided you with some additional information. Uh, one of the pieces of information that appears on that question and answer page is that there is no timeline. So yes, we have to have a hearing, but there is no timeline for hearing. You can have it in the middle of the year, you can have it when you're comfortable, when you feel like you have enough information. Uh, seeing as how I distributed the follow-up information tonight, I kind of get the sense that we're not really ready to act on it, unless there's, unless there's been some independent research, which is certainly, uh, free to build. But you can table this if you so desire, yes.
Uh, can I ask, Mr. Johnson, you said, uh, that we have to have a public hearing. If the board decides not to have this program, then we don't have to have a public hearing, do we?
No, you have to have the hearing, because your percentage is above fifty, you're actually at ninety-two.
Okay, because, you know, we talked about, in, about the last meeting, and like our after-school program is, well, I just think it's exceptional. Uh, we have a wonderful, and I did read a lot of the information, but our kids, uh, have a wonderful lunch program. You know, they need vegetables, they need, uh, you know, fruits. And our kids get that, and then somebody brought up about transportation after school. What kids can stay after school, and the parents are gonna come pick them up at two-thirty after they've had this after-school. I mean, our program, uh, is wonderful down at our after-school program. They provide them with, uh, nutritious snacks.
But, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I think every student that's at risk does not participate in that program.
No, they don't, but they're still, you know, our parents are gonna come in and pick them up at two-thirty, uh, you know, so they can stay and have a, their snack.
Can we table this so I can go over the table tonight?
Excuse me?
Can we table this so I can go over the table? We just have to see.
I had intention of the table this anyways, because we just got this information tonight, so.
Yeah.
But, uh. So do you, do you second Sinead's point?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor to table this right now? Put that on the next agenda for number seven. Okay, to consider discussion of a contract with Nike providing uniforms.
I got, I got your cheat sheet here. Nina gave you the. Okay, did we win tonight?
We did.
Oh, yes.
Four to two. The Hornets on the road at Beaches Rapids.
So I have to ask one question here, so Anna can go here. Uh, usually in snow days, we don't have sports events, but where tomorrow's canceled for, not a school event. We're supposed to have a volleyball game at Calis. Can we still go and hang out?
I would say yes.
I would say, I mean, this is like, it's not a snow day. It's not a weather-related event, it's something that, you know, the physical building is not usable.
So, uh, in front of you, you have a offer from Nike via Soccer City out of Massachusetts. A one-year, option one, a three-year contract with Nike. Uh, you get a thousand dollars a year free promo, thirty-five percent off. When we reach a ten thousand dollar threshold, you get another ten percent back. Option two, a five-year contract with Nike, seventy-five hundred dollars a pre-promo, free gear over the five years, and thirty-seven point five percent off. Once you reach ten thousand dollars, you get an extra ten percent back in free gear. With Soccer City, they'll set up a online store course of Lubeck gear. Sweatshirts, t-shirts, hats, uh, parents, friends can go on, go on the Lubeck's, uh, website, buy gear. Will also get.
Go where?
Where's that?
And go where?
On Lubeck's school website?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, our, our athletic website. So, and, uh, that will come back to us too. So it's a very, it's a very good offer from Nike, it's comparable to any ones I've had at the college level. And, uh, so, option one, option two, or option three?
Bill, you know, uh, with this, how much do you think, like, how much does Lubeck pay? And even, uh, I, I really might know this, because you kids, how much does Lubeck pay per year right now? I mean, how often do we get new uniforms and everything?
I don't know.
You don't, yeah.
This is my second.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm just wondering, do, you know, how often do we update on?
And that was.
Like every five or eight years, you're making.
Spend the ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So are we going to spend the ten thousand dollars?
Well, you walk through the store, you walk through the online store.
I don't know, I'm actually.
Yeah. It, it, even if you don't, you're still gonna get either three thousand or a thousand dollars a year, fifteen hundred dollars a year free promo, plus any thirty-five or the thirty-seven, uh, point five percent off each year.
And what is free promo?
Free gear. Uh, so you have the Nike catalog, and you want to buy soccer uniforms, and they cost fifteen hundred dollars, you get them free.
Let's say within a five-year though, uh, we have to spend ten thousand, but we're, we're gonna get some back.
You, you're gonna get fifteen hundred or a thousand each year upfront free, and you're gonna get a discount with anything you buy.
How much do you have to spend each year in order to get that?
Well, you know, we get the thousand and fifteen hundred because we're signing this agreement.
Right.
If we spend more than ten thousand dollars, we're getting an additional ten percent.
But you're getting something.
That's over three a period.
Yes, that's over here, more five years.
And with this too, Bill, uh, that night that the Booster girls were here, they're gonna help with some of this, didn't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still trying to. I, I like the idea, I just, uh, well, we've got two sentences. One says plus additional ten percent back on orders over ten thousand dollars. Then it goes on and says your discount will be thirty-five percent off catalog retail. Is it thirty-five percent off regardless of spending ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so we get a thousand bucks a year plus thirty-five percent off.
Right. Reach the ten thousand threshold, you get another ten percent.
Gotcha, on top of the thirty-five percent. It's not very well written, but it's, it's like.
No, the way I'm, the way I'm reading it is that we have to spend five thousand dollars each year.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not, only if you get the extra ten percent.
And like right now, Bill, what do you think that, I mean, watch, uh, sports are in need of some new equipment, all of, all of them? Yeah.
We did get new soccer jerseys.
We did get new soccer, yes.
Now, did the school did that, or the Booster?
School, I don't know, actually, actually, Mr. Ashby saved us some money through one of his contacts.
Awesome.
Thank you.
We used one of those accounts.
Yes, come with that money.
So you'll never be owed anything, only if you save money, so.
I mean, I, you know, I, some of the uniforms, I mean, our kids need some stuff.
Now, one thing I want to bring your attention to, when it says exclusively Nike, you will be in Nike. If, uh, Martin says the sale on Adidas uniforms, sweatshirts, you can't get it. They'll be, they'll be Nike for three and five years.
I think the kids would like Nike.
Okay, let's say someone in town goes on Facebook, they're selling sweatshirts. That's completely separate from what goes on here. I mean, they're not being bought for the school, they're being bought for parents right of them.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but our kids cannot wear them to or during a promenade.
They'd like to lease in that one.
We'll, we'll be, well, actually, I'm not gonna come over that, but that would be in the contract. So if, if your interests are in these two options, you'll get a formal contract from us, let me know which one you want.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask for, we didn't get that for decent contract. My personal feeling is, let's go with the three-year thing.
Yeah, I, I think the three-year would probably.
Subject to getting accepted.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Who makes the most?
The motion?
I'm moving. I want to move, I'll second your move.
Okay, so to go for the three-year Nike exclusive contract, and, um, we'll get the formal contract, we'll look at it, and we'll vote for that. All in favor of that?
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, there you go.
Thanks for doing the homework on all of that.
Any good news for us, Cecil?
Not really, no.
Oh.
Okay. I think the day off from school tomorrow anyways, so.
Who's babysitting my kids?
Okay, that's, that's a wrap.
I just wanna give you what it is.
Good.
What I'm told, you might be wrong. I don't think there's a block between.
Thank you.
Sonny, I appreciate that.